But they can be unlicensed at sixteen. There's no skills test or anything. So seventeen year old kid who, who can't get a driver's license can still run around and drive these things.
Saying that ours may is more restrictive because it may be fourteen, but we would have the skills test.
We, yeah, well, uh, we put the skills test in there to deal with that particular issue sixteen to fourteen. At this point, I don't know why you have the skills test. I mean, it was there to try to deal with a fourteen year old who was driving.
Changed into sixteen, they wouldn't need that.
Well, there are, there are plenty of, there are plenty of people who are sixteen and not licensed.
Right.
I, I would keep it the way it is sixteen, and if you have a license, then that's great. If not, then you have to do the skills test. But I, but I, Steve, I, I look, I, I. When, when, when I hear stat, when I hear him read the statute and without looking at the statute stuff, I, I, I understand that you have case law that, that might point otherwise.
It's not case law, it's attorney, attorney general opinions.
It's the Florida Attorney General's opinions, which carry weight. They're not, they're not the precedent of, of, of law, but they take a, I mean, on issues of interpreting state statutes, they are.
I haven't read everything.
They're significant.
Right, but he's, he's telling.
Uh, if you wanna read the stuff, then defer this and you can read it to convince yourself of what it says.
There's no reason to defer it.
I'm, I'm, I'm good with that, but.
No reason to defer it. Why don't we change it for now to sixteen?
Okay.
Okay? If there becomes an issue, we'll address it at the time. Is that fine with council?
Yeah.
Amy? Is that fine?
When you have a fourteen year old, you're just gonna, that's when you'll have to deal with it.
That's what we're doing.
When a fourteen or fifteen year old's driving a, a golf cart.
The issue moving badly.
Excuse me, but what if the parent comes and says, here's the state law that says fourteen?
That's exactly what, that's what they're gonna do.
And the state can't enact laws against the federal government, so I'm not sure that.
Anyway. When they buy a golf cart for their kids.
By saying, let me explain something. By saying we want the people to be sixteen, or a, a, a pretty parent will say, you know what?
I agree.
You can't drive the golf cart because the town of Golden Beach wants you to be sixteen.
Correct.
So most parents, responsible parents, will tell the fourteen year old, you can't drive it, because that's the rules.
They'd be glad, they'd be glad.
Right, they'll be glad, so, you know, if anything, yeah, if anything, it's, it's setting a little precedent.
I, I agree with you.
So with that, town clerk, love to do a roll call, please?
Mayor Singer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mendel?
No, hold on, hold on.
What?
You have to, you have to put it in proper format. So you're, you're, there's a motion, there's a motion. Ordinance amending the age from fourteen to sixteen. You need to vote on that.
That's correct.
Then, after you vote on, then you could vote on the ordinance as a whole. So you need a, you need a motion to amend the ordinance from the age of fourteen.
I'll second it. All in favor, say aye.
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 Now, now on.
I don't mean to interrupt you, but I'm getting texts, people on, can't watch it on TV, said the.
Well, because my mic is up here, sorry. Use it for fishbites.
Is the TV on in there?
Yeah.
Can you guys hear it in here? It's fine?
Yeah, it's, my mic is far away this one. I put it up there for someone to see.
Sorry to interrupt, go on.
Now, on the motion as amended, a motion to adopt is always in order.
Motion to adopt.
As amended.
As amended. Roll call, please.
Mayor Singer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mendel? Councilmember Bernstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Rojas? Motion passes.
Okay. Item number one, second, K two, an ordinance, uh, amending the, the, uh, town code or ordinance to revise requirement for zone one oceanfront properties.
An ordinance of the Town Council of the Town of Golden Beach, Florida, to amend chapter sixty-six zoning to revise requirements for zone one oceanfront properties. D, building height, number one, main residence, lowercase d, amending allowable use in the area below the. To include a gym and laundry facilities, providing for separability, providing for conflicts, providing for inclusion in the code, and providing for an effective date.
Any a motion to approve? Any a second?
Mayor, mayor, just before we go into the item, I'd just like to remind the mayor and the council, Robert's rules of order. A motion to reconsider is only appropriate at the meeting where the, an item is being discussed, or at the meeting following that meeting. If a meeting after that meeting is held, then a motion for reconsideration is not in order. So items for reconsideration can only be held during the meeting where the item is being discussed, or at the meeting immediately following that meeting. Just to remind the council, when a motion to reconsider is appropriate on an item that passes or fails the agenda. As it relates to ordinance number five eight four dot one eight. Item, ordinance five eight four point one eight is specific, uh, is a cleanup ordinance that allows us to place gyms and laundry facilities underneath, uh, the substrate on a, on a home on ocean. This is a cleanup item that passed on first reading, no changes from first reading.
Council, any comments? Public, any comments?
I could, I could have the clerk bring my, my Robert's rules of order.
Roll call, please?
Mayor Singer?
Yes.
You had to open it to the public.
Yeah, he did, he did, he did.
Vice Mayor Mendel?
Yes.
Councilmember Bernstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Rojas?
Yeah.
Motion passes.
Item number L, ordinance is first reading, there are none. Item number N, quasi-just a resolution, there are none. The following items are on the consent agenda. N three, official meeting of the minutes, the August twenty-first, two thousand eighteen regular town council meeting. Item number N four, official meeting of September twelfth, two thousand eighteen, first budget hearing meeting. N five, official meeting of the September twenty-seventh, final budget hearing and special town council meeting. Item N six, resolution of the town council approving a mutual aid agreement between the town of Golden Beach and the village of Indian Creek. Item number N seven, a resolution of the town adopting amendment three to the two thousand and two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen fiscal year operating budget. Item number N eight, a resolution of the town council recognizing city, city government week, October twenty-second to October twenty-eighth. Item number three through eight are on the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone not approved? The consent agenda approves. Item number nine and ten were pulled off, so town resolution, item O eleven, a resolution of the town council authorizing canal dredging.
A resolution of the town council of the Town of Golden Beach, Florida, authorizing the submittal and processing of permits for canal dredging, providing for implementation and an effective date.
Any a motion to approve? Any a second, Councilmember Bernstein?
Yes.
Town manager?
Mayor, council, this is, uh, we're finally at a final, at the final permitting stage of our canal maintenance project. What this does is it submits to the, to derm for final approval. We'll have our permanent hand by the end of the year and we'll go out to bid in January. Um, but we've changed our canal maintenance program. Our canal maintenance program now will require for us to do canal maintenance in all of our canal waterways to provide for a minimum clear draft of five feet, uh, at low tide. What we've done is we've, now, we did an analysis of all of the boat docks that we have in town, and what is the largest vessel that could be moored within the interior canals, not on the intercoastal waterways, but within the interior canals, based on the largest vessel that could be moored in town, and based on the clear draft that's needed by those vessels at low tide. We feel that providing a five feet clear draft at low tide is the appropriate and most fiscally responsible approach to canal maintenance. We ask your favorable support on this item, so we can make our final transmittal. Like I said, mentioned earlier, during the next two months, we'll be drafting our RFQ and our RFP to go out for prequalifications of those responsible bidders to provide us with this service, and then we'll go out to bid. Once proposals are secured, a selection committee will rank those proposals, and the award will be made by this council at a, at a meeting in the future.
Uh, open for discussion for the council. Amy, do you have any comments?
Do we have any idea once they start how long it'll, how long it'll take?
Yes, so, um, it could take anywhere from six months to nine months, depending on the depth and that the location. The great thing is that we've been able to resurvey our canals. Because we found no new grass or no grass in town, it allowed us to, uh, not have to do a mitigation project. So, once we start, it'll take anywhere from six to eight months.
And by not doing the mitigation project, it saves, town saves over seventy thousand dollars.
That's correct.
So, that was a huge savings.
It was.
So, but the long process is getting the approvals and the permits.
That's correct.
So, trust me, it'll be two years for me.
It has been.
So, uh, any comments? Any public comments? Close it to the council, close it to the public. Roll call, please?
Mayor Singer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mendel?
Yes.
Councilmember Bernstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Rojas? Motion passes.
With that, we're gonna.
Can't happen soon enough.
With that, we're gonna go into our, uh, town hall presentation. I'm gonna start, and then turn it over to the town manager. Let me explain before we even get started on this. You're taking my props. Uh, we can do it over there. So before we get started, let me just tell you, the town manager, I've been working all summer to try to, uh, start the wheels in motion for the town, new town hall and civic center. We have listened to the residents. Several, uh, items were pointed out to us. Oh, and Lisette, excuse me, I did, and Lisette, who's been helping us tremendously, has been a big asset to our team. But, a few items have been pointed out that we've been cognizant of. Number one is, we know that a civic hall and town hall is needed. Uh, number two is, we know that the residents do not want any financial burden to build a new town hall and a civic center. So what we did was, and I'm gonna get into that, we kinda worked backwards. We know how much money we have, and how much money we can afford, and then we went from there forward. The other thing is, I know the residents wanted a town hall that could survive a category three or four, possibly five hurricane, where we can use as a command post. Another item is, we wanted to add additional parking throughout the town, so when people have parties, whether it be in town or on the beach, there's always been a lack of sufficient parking by our plan that we're gonna propose tonight. And again, this is for discussion purposes only. We are not even close to getting started. I'm gonna go through what the process is after this. But, uh, we know that the town needs additional parking, and we took that into consideration. Also, another concern of the residents' work, they wanted additional amendments. So we took that into the consideration. And what we did was, we're gonna elaborate a second on the funding, but we know we have approximately about five million dollars, what we can afford to spend in the town of Golden Beach. And one other concern that people brought up, which was a great point, was that we have this great historic town hall. You know, what are we gonna do with it? We don't wanna knock it down, we don't wanna waste it, but at the same time, we know we've outgrown it, and we need to do something. We can still utilize it, and at the same time, build a new town hall. So, taking that into consideration, what we thought would be a great first approach is, why don't we do the town hall to convert this, our existing town hall, into a gym and a civic center. So basically, what we're gonna do, again, this is all discussion purposes only, we're not voting, we're not making any decisions tonight. Uh, to elaborate on the process, what we plan on doing is going through these diagrams and discussion purposes this evening. The next few months, have open discussions about it with the council and the residents, any suggestions and recommendations. Then by the first quarter of two thousand and nineteen, go out, we have to go through a bid process. We have to have qualified bidders to go out to hire, excuse me.
Sorry about that.
To go out and to, uh, hire, uh, figure out who we're gonna hire for an architect. After that gets done, then we go into the process of going out to bids for construction. Again, this is for discussion purposes, we're not making any decisions this evening, but a good starting point is, we have this existing town hall. We hate to use, you know, for it to go to waste.
Excuse me, but where is the existing structure?
We're gonna, I'm gonna get into that. Okay. So, let's talk about the existing structure. The existing structure is the, the town hall here currently. And what we plan on doing is, we plan on opening the bottom floor, make it completely open, build ADA vet restrooms, put in a full gym, possibly a training room, a stretching room, and again, preliminary plans, nothing's finalized. We're trying to use what's best for the space that we have. We'll have to replace the windows, we have to, uh, keep the AC, we have to keep the air conditioning. We do have to do some changes, we have to make the bathrooms, we need to make the lions, et cetera. We're gonna make the bottom floor a, a gym facility. On the, in the, in this, uh, structure, we plan on building an in-house, indoor stair crates to go to the second floor, which is currently being occupied by a police department. The second floor will turn into, uh, a game room, possibly a billiard room, and, uh, a little conference room for, you know, residents to utilize. So this space is gonna be for the residents, okay, and residents only. We know that we can have space for residents and residents only, so this, this place will be for the residents and residents only. The gym, the game room, uh, the billiard room, et cetera. Again, these are preliminary pictures, these are preliminary plans, but I feel that it's a good starting point. With that, behind us currently is public works. We feel, at this stage, that both the town manager, Lisette and I, we all feel that we wanna keep public works where it is, but at the same time, it's a lot more space, because there's offices there than we need. So what we plan on doing is cutting the back part of the public works building, okay, which is, runs behind this building, okay? We're gonna shorten the building by approximately twenty-five percent, I believe, give or take, and we're gonna turn that into all green space. We'll make that the dog park. Okay, so all behind the building will be a huge dog park. It's about six thousand square feet of green space for the dog park, okay? So, this is our preliminary plan for the town hall. What I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna go through the whole process, I'm gonna introduce, Alex is gonna go through the second phase of this, and then we'll open up for discussion. Again, I can't emphasize enough, you know, we want, nothing's edged in stone. This, we had to have a starting point, this was our starting point. If you remember, when I first came and did the CIP project, this is exactly how the CIP project did, and how I started the CIP project. And if you look at the renderings of the CIP project, CIP project from day one, it looked in our mouth, totally different, but it was a good starting point. So with that, that is what we're utilizing for the, uh, current space. So, okay, you asked a good question, Ms. Fishbine, where is the new town hall gonna go? So, currently, what we're planning on, after deep discussions of town manager Lisette and I, we wanted it to be a little off A one A, okay? But at the same time, have access to A one A. So what we decided to do is make the building go from east to west, instead of north to south. So we're trying to save as much green space as possible along A one A. So when you're driving on A one A, you don't see a huge structure. This is gonna be a three-story structure, okay, two-story structure, but three-story structure. The bottom floor is gonna be parking, and the town manager's gonna elaborate in a second about the layout of that. And then the first floor, which is the second floor, will be for the city, city town hall, I mean, the city offices. The third floor, which he's gonna elaborate in a few minutes, will be for the, uh, the town hall center and a little party room, et cetera. So, this, the town hall is gonna run from the east off A one A and run west. So the building's gonna run this way. So there'll be some, uh, building on the A one A, but setback. So it's not gonna, it's not gonna impair anyone's view that has a home on A one A. So when you're driving on A one A, you'll see part of the building, but the remainder of the building is gonna walk, walk its way this way. So you can see the building going from east to west. This is the existing pump station. There'll be parking here on the first floor, there'll be parking all the way here. There'll be entrance on A one A and entrance on Terracina Avenue, okay? Which, this is a, a, a great benefit. What that does is, if you live on Golden Beach Drive now, every person that needs to come to the town hall has to drive through the garden house and down, uh, Golden Beach Drive. This is gonna eliminate probably forty percent, if not more, of the traffic on Golden Beach Drive. Because anyone going to town hall is gonna go this way through A one A, and not have to come on, uh, Golden Beach Drive. The second part of the, uh, change is, this, we're gonna move the basketball court, so it'll face A one A, and then there'll be a volleyball court. These are the existing tennis courts, gonna remain the same. The existing pavilions are gonna remain the same. The existing playgrounds are gonna remain the same. Because what we're trying to do is, these spaces are workable spaces, and there's no issues with these spaces, so we don't wanna reinvent the wheel. At the same time, okay, like I said before, we're adding additional parking here. We have two options for this back here. We're gonna, one option, which is my favorite, is we're gonna eliminate part of the, uh, most side of town hall. We're gonna close the street in front of here. So.
Yeah.
So one of the options would be. Or, the other option is to keep it the same, having this, like, this thirteen spots. Thirteen spots to eliminate. We're still gonna have over ninety plus spots, so.
Alright, so. We started talking about concept of the town hall or civic center. And when we had the dialogue with our community, our community said, we want you to do a couple things. Try to come back to us with something that is, um, unique to Golden Beach in terms of size and scale, respects the heritage of Golden Beach in terms of town hall, and that you can afford without raising our taxes, and, and something that you could afford within our current budget. So what the mayor and I did is, we asked Lisette, Rupora, to, give me the last name.
Lisette Rupera Tavaschol.
She, she has an architect, she's an architect, she has a background in architecture. She's consulting for us. She's not gonna be the one that designs any of this. What we wanted to do is have something that allows us to show our community what we can afford, what we can fit within the spaces that we have, and take some ideas. And I gotta tell you, she took a concept and really tried to, to, to materialize it. We've been very, very happy with this. So, in terms of our current footprint, so this is our current footprint today. So today, we have all of the land on A one A that we purchased. If you remember back in the summer, we talked about building a building that goes from north to south. The mayor had this great idea during the summer. He said, look, it would be difficult to provide all that massing on A one A. So if we could reorientate the building from going north to south, to east to west, and still keep some green space on A one A, we think the community would buy into that. So we tasked Lisette with redesigning the whole concept. And so, we've been able to design a building that allows for green space, so as you're driving on A one A, you see open park spaces, and some park, and, and a building that has, uh, parking underneath. We thought about a parking deck, okay, because I know that the Ocean Boulevard residents have asked for a parking deck. A parking deck would have only yielded thirty-nine parking spaces, but would have driven our cost up by a one point two million dollars. So the value of thirty-nine spaces for one point two million dollars didn't make sense to us. So what we said is, okay, if we build a building on, on, on stilts, and provide for parking underneath it, and we no longer have that ramp, we could save some of those spaces. And some of our residents were asking for us to be a resilient city. So a building on stilts allows for when, as tidal influences occur, or if we were to have a storm surge, will be high enough that we could be a crest, okay? In addition to that, the building that we're proposing, um, I'm not sure the building just yet, but the, but the building, sorry, these words are clumsy. The building actually sits fifty feet back from the curb on A one A. So this is not a mass that's on A one A, it sits back fifty feet. Right now, our, our setback for A one A is thirty-five, thirty-five feet to the front. We're actually going fifteen feet beyond that. So this building is not actually on top of you as you're driving by. As the mayor, as the mayor mentioned, we explored two options in terms of parking, in terms of, in terms of layout. We feel that we can achieve having a maximum of one hundred and eighteen new parking spaces, okay? We currently have forty-four parking spaces, so we're yielding sixty, sixty-plus parking spaces by adding the parking underneath and by, and by reconfiguring it. We still haven't decided, and we won't decide, until after we go out to bid for an architect and engineers and consulting services to design this building, on whether or not we're gonna keep Golden Beach Drive open, or divert Golden Beach Drive traffic to the alleyway behind Golden Beach, behind the building, to go out south gate, because that is an option for us. So we can re-divert traffic this way, go through the alleyway, and still use the south gate.
And by utilizing that, we gain tremendous green space. So see your picture right now, from here to the tennis courts would all be green space.
Nine, nine thousand additional square feet of green space. Now, this is not what we're planning to build, okay, this is extremely important, because I don't want people to overreact or anything. Remember, the idea is that we need to, in, in drafting an RFP, we need to provide to the designers an idea of what we think we can have in our building, okay? So we know that we need approximately nine thousand to ten thousand square feet of office space. We also know that our building needs to fit within this footprint, and needs to have an east to west orientation, and needs to provide for the parking space that we want, and provide for an amenity for our residents. So this particular line, which Lisette put together, I think looks stunning, it may not be ultimately what we get. This shows that we can build a building, okay, that meets all of our criteria. It allows for parking underneath. As you're driving by, it's pretty open. The second floor is all of the offices that we need. The third floor is for our residents. During council meetings, it's our council chambers, but at night, if you wanted to hold a social gathering, it's a one thousand, here.
Uh, we have about four thousand square feet, uh, sorry, four thousand five hundred square feet of terrace space.
Would there be an elevator?
Yes.
Yes. There's an elevator tower here. The red, uh, if you look through the chart, is vertical circula, circulation where we have.
Where's the pa, is the parking in, uh, undercover or outside?
Yes. There are parts that are exposed, but, um, everything under the building is obviously covered.
So, so as you can tell here, the hash area is under the building, so need a parking space is under the building, and need a parking areas outside of the footprint. So some are underneath, and some are outside exposed. But in terms of the building itself, what we, what I was trying to get at is, so the third floor is an additional amenity for our residents. You could use the actual rooftop as a terrace to have social gathering and events. So in addition to using our beach pavilion or the total park pavilion for space to hold ga, hold events, you would be able to use our third floor. What makes this building unique is by having a circulating tower. You could go from ground floor to the third floor without ever accessing the second floor. So we would close off the second floor at nights and weekends when our residents are using the top floor, and the top floor is self-contained. What, the beauty of this concept is, we asked our residents, what was important to you? And many of you said, we want an amenity that's ours and not open to the public. So when the mayor and I started brainstorming, and we started talking to Lisette, and we said, what can we do, how can we save one money? How do we take, how do we take an eleven million dollar project and make it a five point one million dollar project, right? And we said, okay, we need to keep our existing infrastructure. Many of you are probably thinking, oh, wait a second, Alex, you told us during the summer that this building was non-havable, that we can't use it, it's not, it doesn't meet OSHA, it doesn't meet any of that. I'm not feeling hypocrite. This building, we cannot use for, it does not meet OSHA, it does not meet FODP, it does not meet, but as a gym, it wouldn't need to meet any of those. Because if this building gets washed away, there's no losing offices, there's no losing anything, we would lose our gym space, okay? We will make it ADA compliant, which deals with all the OSHA requirements, right? So we are planning to put in two ADA bathrooms, um, and make, and by making this building self, self-contained, all the doors will be on a key fob system. So only residents of Golden Beach who have been issued a key fob would be able to come and access the building. We would staff it dur, during normal hours. We would have a, an attendant who staffs the gym and makes sure that everything's clean like we do in our beach pavilion. But our residents would come here as a key fob. Can visitors come? The rules as to who can come into the building, the council will have to draft one of those ideas later on.
Down the road.
But what we wanted to do is say, okay, let's create a space outside of the town hall that is exclusive to our residents. So, the Golden Beach clubhouse, this would be your clubhouse. You would come in, there's a gym, and on the second floor. Um, and as, and as the mayor said, you know, in the concept of keeping public works inside the town, that, that allows us to do two things. By closing off all the parking days around town, around the public works building, and making the building a vertical green space, the residents of Terracina will be also, um, accommodating, because their request was, how do we try to make that massing more, more palatable to us and our, and our visitors? Lisette, we're stealing your thunder. Lisette, we're stealing your thunder, but.
No, no, hey, you're doing a great job.
But the goal, but the goal was to try to make this green space area more, uh, more palatable to them. Now, what we're asking for tonight, you just said, okay, this is great, what are you asking for? Well, let us, let us come and talk about a few things. We know that we have five point one to five point two million dollars available for this building. Where is that coming from? We believe we have one point eight million dollars of drug money that we have seized or have been committed to us. We also have one point three million dollars in operating savings from the last three budgets that we have. And we know that we have a funding capacity, we have enough capacity in our budget to take on an additional two million dollar loan. Don't forget, this is a three-year project. So over the course of the next three years, as we're building and constructing that building, there's still operating things that allows to accelerate that we paid on that loan, right? Two million dollars seems like a lot of money, it actually isn't based on our, on our funding capacity. We have enough capacity in our current operating budget to take on a four million dollar loan, but we don't wanna be a stick of fossil. So we wanna put a budget of five point two million dollars, tell our designers, design a building to five point two million dollars. That would be the new town hall, the, this, this new plan. And if we can get this plan done, right, then in phases, we would build this out. And so we believe.
Because you can't move it to this building.
We can't move it to this building until it's completed.
The other thing is, this building we're gonna build to at least a category three, hopefully a four upon the hurricane. So if there's ever a storm, we could use it as a command post. And that was one of the big issues with the past storm. The past storm was, thank God if Vergalia did not let our officers stay and use that as a command post. Golden Beach would have gone unprotected for almost forty-eight hours.
What, the mayor is correct, so the building would be designed to a cap four. But we would still create a bunker within the building, so an enclosed bunker to sustain a cap five. So we would have what they have, what is called a bunker room, similar to what the city of Miami Beach has at the Miami City Ballet, believe it or not, that's where it is. Inside the Miami City Ballet in Miami Beach, cause that's the highest elevations in the city. When I was there, Zerick Ranswier, we designed a bunker within the ballet building that could sustain a category five storm. And that's where the emergency personnel from Miami Beach is how, uh, housed during the cap three, cap four, cap five storm. They go to the Miami City Ballet building. So within. Within this building, we would harden one of these facilities, one of these blocks to cap five. Now, again, this is just conceptual. When we select an architect firm and we would go out to, uh, pre-qualification, we would qualify architect firms and then put out an RFP. For a design of a building to this nature. What they give us in return may become something completely different, right? Based on the, based on the financial implications. But as the mayor mentioned, when we went out to bid off with the CIP, and if you look at the word before you need to make this on this wall here in the hallway. What we, what we conceptually put out there and what we got received were two different things. But in theory, they all met the same objective. We knew we wanted to underground our utilities. We knew we wanted, uh, a pace for our pedestrians to walk safe. We knew that we wanted, um, a storm water system, a new water system, ten, uh, three new bridges. So they delivered the projects, but it just, just looks a little bit different. So tonight what we're asking, ultimately, let's get back to that question is, is this on the right path? Are we being responsible to the concerns that you expressed to us this summer? And have we brought back to you something that you feel is palatable in terms of, in terms of cost? In terms of scope, in terms of design, and more importantly, the expectations that you gave us? You said to us, build something that's to scale. We believe that from a twenty-two thousand square foot building which we proposed this summer to a nine thousand square foot building, okay?
This building is ninety-seven hundred square feet. They vote this and the top, and the council, everything on top, not counting the, uh.
Our Ocean Bo, our Ocean Boulevard residents said, we need more parking. We've, we've heard you, we're going from forty-five parking spaces to a hundred and two, a hundred and.
One hundred and eighteen.
A hundred and eighteen parking spaces. So we, we more than doubled the parking that we have. Cause you said.
He keeps saying, just one question, a hundred and eighteen parking spaces, is that just gonna be the allocation to the town hall? Or is that gonna also include the parking spaces?
That's, that's all of our park, that's all of our parking spaces.
So that will also include the parking spaces by the, the West Hall and Civic Center?
Yes, that's total.
Is that the largest building you can build?
No, we could build, we could build a sixteen thousand square foot building.
But we're, but we figure our needs is about ten thousand square feet max. And at the same time, we have, uh, we don't need any more of that, cause we're not growing. And at the same time, we have a cost constraint. We don't wanna go over the budget of five million dollars.
What about a kitchen?
That's a kitchen.
Bath dishes.
Large.
Two kitchens. Again, the plan, the structure.
Before Mr. Sun asks this question, Mayor.
I'm sorry, this, the design of what space is, is not writ, it's, you know, it's not written in stone. All we're doing is we know how many square feet we need. We, kitchen bigger or smaller will come.
I think you've got something reversed, in my opinion. I think that the social hall, you will find many uses for. I mean, I could tell you something, I think, I would reverse, why not the office office, going to the third floor and the.
Because on the third floor, you have a terrace and you have a third view. You, you could see the ocean. You could have outs, outs, outdoor events overlooking the ocean.
You mean you're gonna split the space between an enclosed social hall and a terrace?
Yes, correct. You can, yeah.
It, it allows for a re-footprint. The, the last point I was gonna make is, you also said, respect the heritage of the Golden Beach. And so when we looked at this existing building and trying to preserve the, the nature of, of this building and, and the path. Even though it's not historically designated, there is a, there's an emotional attachment to this facility. It's been in our community for many, many, many decades. And so what we wanted to do is preserve this building, keep, keep the aesthetic value of it. But provide something that we, to our residents would enjoy. And so there's a way to soften this building up and still provide that amenity that you're asking for. We also heard our residents saying, you're offering too many amenities. What we really want is a gym and an indoor party room, so that when it rains, we could go from the beach pavilion to an enclosed area. I think that we achieved that by providing, by providing the, the event space on the third floor of the new civic center or the new town hall. With an outdoor amenity deck, which is what we're proposing. Sorry, I keep on going back and forth. But when you look, when you look at this as your alternative party space to the beach pavilion. You have, you have a very large enclosed party space, cause the town chambers basically would have a wall that would be closed, so you wouldn't see the dais. And all the chairs would be full, full of old chairs. So you now have this open party area that you can go out to a rooftop area. And if you wanted to have like a, like a cocktail hour, or even a al-misala or wedding, you could do those type of amenities on this roof deck.
Roof deck's approximately five thousand square feet.
How big is the enclosed area?
The, the chamber area is thirteen hundred square feet.
And the roof deck is five thousand square feet.
It's the footprint of the, the footprint of this area, the enclosed area is, is about eighty square feet less than the enclosure at the beach pavilion. So we would take little, cause what we didn't wanna do, this is important. We also didn't wanna create a, a space that's too big, that would be too inviting for too many events. So because the beach pavilion is fourteen hundred square feet, the chambers would be approximately thirteen hundred and fifty square feet. We said, okay, if you're, if you get rained out, you would have an alternative space and you could still have the roof, the deck to provide that outdoor sand area.
Can we go back to the chart that shows when you were gonna close off part of Golden Beach Drive and, uh, provide the additional green space?
Sure.
So that just seemed like a terrific idea. Firstly, is I wanna compliment Lisette, because I think the design is fantastic.
Thank you.
And I think the design you came up with is really, really good. And I also want to compliment the mayor on the fact that you guys went east-west. And the location of the building, I think is also terrific. Well, very well thought out. When you quoted five million dollars on a ten thousand square foot space, which is about five dollars a foot, and we already own the land. That cost seems kinda high to me, I think we could get that cost down.
Again.
Just a general comment.
Perfect, but we have to, you know, we have to know our max.
I think it's conservative numbers, and I think you will make that budget. I think a lot of the town residents would like two things. One, speaking of half a lot of the dog owners, you guys know I have an eighty pound Ridgeback. That current dog run is being used a lot. And it runs about a hundred feet or so by about forty feet wide. The new dog runs only to be about six thousand feet. If there's a way you guys could consider elongating that, because there's a lot of big dogs that run. And a square space is not as usable as a rectangular space.
There would be a run here, along this way.
Oh, okay, I saw that point.
And then, and, yeah, so the, so all of this area here is new green space. So all the parking areas that we have behind the building, so we would enclose this entire footprint for our dog area. So there would be a long run and then a smaller.
Is it, it'll be comparable to what we have now?
Bigger, a much bigger.
And the second thing is, the idea of, of closing off part of Golden Beach Drive for the extra green space would be terrific if we could get it.
Yeah, we can do it.
My question is, do we have the right to close off that street?
Yeah, that street we can.
It's already closed. It, physically you drive it, but legally it's already closed.
Correct.
Great, I feel a lot better.
Two, two, two things Lisette just brought in, Lisette. Um, the existing dog park's about thirty-four hundred square feet, the new proposed area is sixty-two hundred square feet.
Double the size.
Double the size.
Those are the green spaces that matters.
Right.
Double the green space.
I suggest that you see Golden Beach and Old Nature Center, do you know where it is?
Yes, ma'am.
Of Sheridan.
Yes, ma'am.
And look at their party room. It's huge, it's beautiful, and I think it might give you an idea of a very green room.
Well, definitely, well, definitely add that to our list of places.
But the, the last question I have is, is will the new building have, I just got hurricane glass, we all know that. Have you thought about hurricane shivers? Because, you know, a good storm coming east won't really hit that building hard.
Absolutely, and, and although this rendering shows a lot of glass, ultimately, those are, those are things that during design, we may scale back.
The charge cost.
Because of charge cost. And, and so the idea is, you know, what we, what we really wanted to do is, you know, this circulator tower, to me, is, is, is great. Because it allows us to restrict access to certain floors. It provides a landing for the parking area, so you would go into our, into our circulator. If you wanted to run the stairs, you could go up the stairs, it would be an elevator that takes you to the second floor. Second floor is where we provide our customer service, that's where we call our permits. There'll be an area for our residents. There's, there's enough space within the second, there's enough space within, within this footprint. That our police department has more than adequate space, we're tripling the amount of space they have today, okay? There's an area for our building department that can then at night be used for our kids when they have the, uh, the, uh, Golden Beach Future Leadership Group. They would have, they would have a meeting space that we would have, our resident services department, there's offices for all of our staff. And like the mayor mentioned earlier, Mr. Fishburne, to your point, we know that we are at the max in terms of our staffing that we envision Golden Beach to be. And in fact, the mayor and I just this afternoon talked about, you know, we do know that we're gonna have to scale down staff. And we're prepared to do so. And so when you talk about what are, what else can we offer and what else would we need office space for? This building is our ideal building. We're doubling the amount of, of, of office space that we have today. We're doubling the amount of, of storage space that we have today. We're adding more conference spaces, more meeting spaces, we're adding more amenities for our residents. We're, we're, we're protecting this building, we're, 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 we're reusing, reusing and, and, and being sustainable to this building. And I think that in, in general, I think we, I think we meant what you asked us to meet this summer. And I think, I, I gotta say, thank you Lisette, who was able to put all of these ideas, pen the paper so you can visually see it.
We had to change it about twenty times.
And, and to the mayor's point, sorry, to the mayor's point, we did. We, this building was going north to south, we didn't go east to west. The idea of, the idea of, the idea of having park space on A1A, so when you're driving, you don't say, wow, there's a building. And you see kids playing next to an area, the buildings don't be high enough that when you drive by, you still see the old city hall behind it, right? There's some unique elements to what we put, in the paper, that we, what, what we need to know is, do you like it? Or have we missed the mark?
And the other thing that's very important that I, I touched on, but is really crucial, especially for the residents on South Island and Golden Beach Drive is. Now, we're deterring all the traffic from coming into Golden Beach, that they're either gonna enter off A1A or Terracina. They're not gonna drive on Golden Beach Drive. And I'm telling you, that's about forty percent of our traffic, if not more, of Golden Beach Drive is coming for town hall. So I think it does a few things. One, it alleviates traffic. Two, for safety and security purposes, it really is a, a big plus. Because now less people are coming through the gate, okay? And the third thing is, it utilizes the space town tremendously, the green space, especially if we close off this front. Cause that gives us a huge runway from here to the tennis court, which will be all additional green space. And again, this is discussion purposes only, it's a starting point, it's where we wanna, you know, start and walk before we run. And then our plan is to start, our timeframe is, we're gonna mow over this the next month, two months, three months. The first quarter of two thousand and nineteen, we're gonna put together a bid package with qualified bids. It's gonna go out to bid for our qualified, for, for.
As we prepare our, our bid package and our bid documents, council will take action on that. So it's not just that the mayor and I draft these documents, it'll come to council for council approval. Council will decide, have we put in all the right elements into that package? Is it worded correctly? Have we asked them, have we put in the proper constraints in that bid document? Council will take a vote on that document before we actually solicit bids.
Did you notice something, we're removing the garbage carts, so.
Public works area.
Public works back here. So it's not gonna be.
The public works area, so it, it, back in this area, have you noticed here? Right here.
Okay.
Out, out of sight, but in, in the existing parking public works area. That's where they used to be parked, we used to park them back there, before we decided to take up this space here. We've always parked them there. Um, our neighbors to the south may not like the fact that we're moving them back there, but that's where they have always been, in our neighbors south, that, south, that little jurisdiction. Look, this building was also built in a way that we're respecting our neighbors to the south. We kept the footprint of the building in the area where the garden, their garden house is. It only impacts the green house, because you said it affects the heat. So we try to be respectful to their, to, to them as well.
Do we have any other action, Mayor?
And the same thing with the Golden Beach residents on A1A, it's not gonna affect anybody.
Because, because it's, sorry, Mayor, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Because it sits fifty feet back, it's less intrusive and it doesn't tower over.
There's no shadows.
No shadows.
Okay. And I think by our design, okay, we've done, we've conquered several obstacles. One is, you know, we, we needed a new town hall for safety, security purposes and for growth issues. We've conquered that, but at the same time, we're preserving this building, which is a, a, a big plus, okay? We're adding tremendous amenities for the residents, such as a gym, a civic center, a party room. And at the same time, we're getting a new town hall. So, and I, in, in addition to it, we're adding green space. Not taking away, we're basically adding green space.
How, how long would the loan be, a two million loan?
We have, that's, that's all up in the air. We know that there are several institutions that are interested.
It'd be a ten-year loan?
We, we would like to keep it no longer than ten years.
We did that when I purchased the two lots on Golden Beach Drive, on, on A1A, I purchased both those lots. One was seven hundred, the other was seventy ninety. We took out a ten-year loan, we paid it off in four.
Five.
Four, one four, one five, I think, yeah.
And the goal, like I mentioned earlier, because this is a three-year planning horizon and construction process, whatever savings you have, that will, that will add. And the longer, well, the three-year plan, that doesn't mean that we won't get more, at least yet, or, or seize asset dollars. Because we still have three police officers who are detached, getting more drug money for us. We've only committed one point eight, cause that's what we know we have signed that for, but the more that we can get, the better. Mayor, I think staff had questions?
Yeah, just a quick question, I don't see a picture there. Would access to the south gate be extended address?
Yes. So we, we would, we would still provide access to the south gate. So by keeping the alleyway, so we would re-divert traffic through the alleyway to go out to, to that.
How high is this building off the ground?
Well, it's, it's three floors, so it'd be no higher than forty feet?
Yeah, um, to the parrot pit.
From the ground where the first.
Forty-four feet, um, to the top of the tower, uh, we'd probably run to like about forty-eight.
She's talking about the end of that.
What's the height of the first floor above the parking?
Uh, we have a fifteen foot, a ten foot, and a fifteen foot to the top of the roof. And then the elevator would have an overrun of about six feet.
So if the government bid, there's ever a category four or five storm, and the sea service goes through, it's going right through the building, it's not gonna affect the building.
Fifteen, fifteen feet seems like pretty reasonable, um, you know, because we're not in a basin area. So what happened, what happened with Michael and, and Florence, at the point?
No, Florence.
This year?
Because, because all that water goes into a basin area, your surge is gonna be higher. So you have the Gulf and then you have the northeast. Here, surges can be high, but there's nothing that constrains them to make it higher. So fifteen feet surge is what the county says, you know, worst case scenario, best case scenario that we can see. That doesn't mean that there isn't an outlier that gives a thirty-foot surge, but there has never been a surge in South Florida higher than eight feet. So.
And we're gonna build it like, time manager said, to category four, category five standards.
And, and you have eight for surge into the Everglades, but not along the shoreline.
Is there gonna be any kind of fence, bed people just walking from A1A into the channel?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, yes.
It'll all be fenced, so.
It's a little bit big now, but there is an existing wall, you know, as it runs along with, um, some cementing and things, those would, it can remain.
We would choke, it's called choke, we would choke all the open access areas, so that you either go in through a code like we have today. so that you either go in through a code like we have today, um, or fog, or fog. Well, the fog would be for the building. Fogs on the gates are very difficult because of the elements, so, because we've explored putting fogs on all of our access gates. And the problems that we're having is because exposures to the element would cause us to replace those fog systems too frequently, and we just don't have the, like, resources to do that. But, you would have, it would all be enclosed, and there would be no, we would also make it very difficult to have vehicles go through Ocean Mall, so we would choke, that you can't, you couldn't go to town hall and then say, oh, I'm gonna go to Golden Beach Drive, no, that would, we would limit that. You, if you wanted to go inside of town, you would have to leave town hall, drive to the screen, and then come in. But if you're a resident, you wanna come to town hall, you would come to the town hall here, and then walk into the, into the-
I'm taking my golf cart.
Are you fourteen, are you fourteen or sixty?
You don't have one yet. You don't have to steal that.
And then, but steel sets, touch your nose.
But anyways, I think it's a great starting point, and again, we're open for suggestions. Nothing's etched in stone, nothing's written in stone, which is a starting point for us. And I think, you know, like what we did, I did with the CIP project, you gotta walk before you run, this is a good walking point.
I have a question, what if you, the New Year's Eve party has horrible weather? Could you take all the people that attend the New Year's Eve party and put it in that car?
Absolutely, because the footprint of the enclosed area is only sixty feet less than the pavilion, we could absolutely host them in this building. Because also, the, the terrace of this building is four times the size of what we have in terms of space today.
I just wanna see hurricane shutters. Hurricane shutters.
You know what, though, but the human tech readers, and the human tech, you really don't need them, I mean-
I, 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 I know that I said it earlier, I, I just wanna say, you know, we, when the mayor and I have these grand ideas, and we, we wanna talk to our residents, it's very difficult to just kind of have you understand what's in our head and kind of our, our vision. And Lesette really has worked this summer to try to help us put all this pen to paper. I am not gifted at all when it comes to CAD or, or renderings, and so, thank you for helping us get to the challenge.
Thank you. Does anyone have any comments or suggestions? Question? We'll start tomorrow. But thank you.
Nice.
Nice.
Golf, all right, all right, all right. Thank you. So with that-
Wait, I'm sorry, can, can we just say a few things?
Yes.
Um, one, this is, I'd like to make sure everyone is so clear, this is very, very preliminary. This is the first time Amy and I have seen this since we last raised the subject a while ago. It's at very preliminary stages, nothing has moved very long, it's a great conceptual concept. I think it hits a lot of things that we talked about, from the residents, from the council last time, I love taking the traffic off of, um, from Golden Beach and putting it on A1A, I think that's fantastic, but we have less people from out of town coming through here. Um, but again, it is very conceptual, nothing's set in stone on this, this is just early, and it has not gone through very much, it hasn't gone through any, uh, council member discussion at all.
Can you concept be put on the website for the rest of the residents?
They, they, they will be tomorrow morning.
That'd be great.
Yep.
And again, you know, we, we urge you and, you know, to give us some, your feedback, you might think of something, again, we're not moving on this for several months, so, you know, think about it, you have any questions, come see town manager or myself.
Mayor, to, to-
We'll take into consideration.
To Councilman Burdington's point, uh, as I mentioned earlier, so what happens now is, we take all of these concepts and restrictions that we've placed on ourselves. We know that we want at a minimum, at a minimum a hundred and eight spots, a hundred and eighteen spaces. We know that at a min, we wanna build it as at least fifteen feet in height on the first floor. We know that at a minimum, we need nine thousand square feet. So all of these, all of these requirements that we're gonna place on the bidding community, we'll start to formulate a bid document. That bid document will probably come before the council two or three times, until we get it right. Once the council blesses that bid document, which is what we did with the CIP, when, do you remember the CIP? We had six meetings, maybe seven, on sidewalk width, you guys remember that? We would, we would debate three feet, four feet, six feet.
Where we're taking the land from.
Where we were taking the land from, was it coming from the east, was it coming from the west? So I don't want, and the councilman's correct, I don't want anyone to think that we're gonna bring a document, that's it, we're gonna vote it up or down. We're gonna continue to bring these ideas, so that the council and the community can have an open, active dialogue based on premises that we have been given. And so tonight was, this summer you said Taj Mahal was too big, you can't afford it, you want too much, go back with these limitations, so we did that, we went back. So as we put together those documents for your consideration, the community will be invited to participate, the council will be invited to, to participate. When we feel comfortable with our bid document, and the council takes final action on that item, then that document will go out to bid, then we'll start to see what the, the bidder community proposes to us. Once that comes back, then that's, then that's, uh, negotiate and discuss. We may not like what the bidders come back with, it may be something completely different than this, and we may say, no, this is not what we envisioned or what we wanted. And this council will say yes or no, and vote it up or down, and we'll go through this until you feel comfortable with a final set of design that you feel comfortable will not give us any budget overruns, that will be within our, within the numbers that we've, that we, that we've placed. Then we'll award a contract for construction, and then we'll task that. So every step of the, of, of what we're proposing will be ultimately decided by this council after first having feedback from our residents. And that's important to make sure that everyone's clear on that.
With that, November twentieth is our next council meeting.
That is correct.
I wanted to make sure everyone knows that.
The Tuesday of, of, of the week of Thanksgiving.
Is there any way of being at a public meeting, or is that worse?
No, that's worse.
We, we do, we, we, we unfortunately can't move that meeting, because we do have variances that have been advertised already. So we, we, uh, because of the variance process, uh, we're proposing that we're not gonna move that.
I, I might be out of town just so everyone's aware for form purposes.
With that, I'll make a motion to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion to adjourn, any second? Motion to adjourn, thank you guys, thanks for your input, appreciate your time, have a great evening.
I'm sure, remember, I was very special. She wears November twenty.
Yeah, this one.